Um. You all ready?
Ready.
All right, well. It is um. Six thirty one. December fourth, twenty twenty four. And the Nahat Board of Selectmen meeting is now in session. Before we get started, um. I'd take a moment. For us to remember, uh, Nahat's beloved Samantha Sears. Passed away just recently. Uh, I believe Plant had turned a hundred and four, excuse me, a hundred and three this back up back over. But um, I think to the rest of us Nahaters, it seems like she's always been here. And always would be, um. Certainly. She's been a constant presence throughout my whole life and the lives of many others. Always greeting everyone with the with the warmly and with the ear to ear smile. Back in May of twenty twenty three, Kalanta was presented with the Boston. Post cane, which is given to the town's oldest citizen. And um, town moderator Doc, uh, Dave Conlon said it perfectly when he presented Kalanta with a cane. He said, this cane is presented to not only Nahat's oldest citizen, but our most beloved citizen.
Who's that?
You know, so many people feel the same way, um. Kalanta is a big part of beautiful tapestry that is our community. And she could tell you exactly who owe every fiber of that tapestry. Um, she we missed.
Huge loss.
Yeah.
Josh will certainly miss her. We'll certainly miss her down the wharf on Hallout Day. She always came down to to cheer everybody on.
She she showed up everywhere.
Yeah.
She was there. Presence was always was was always known and she made it known.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, I I was very fortunate when we uh. Did the. Large Park Development. Uh, she was a driving force behind that. She worked with me. She worked with me for a solid year on that and. Every day I sat and talked with her, I was more impressed. With how much she knew and how much she was willing to give.
Yeah.
And she's spectacular woman.
I was thinking about the gazebo, the Kalanta Sears gazebo at at Billy's Hill and.
Yeah.
That was almost fifty years ago. That was dedicated to her, right? So. So nineteen seventy six, so. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, she uh, I. There's so many different. Examples of. Uh. You know, different things that have come across my desk where I'm curious about. The history of, you know, a project or, you know. How how, you know, what? What's the background on something? And uh, so of course, you know. Call the Historical Society and. You get lost in conversation, just talking about so many different things with her and um, it's a really big loss. Um, and I uh. You know, want to thank the selectmen too for um. You know, we talked today about. Putting up our uh morning uh bonnets on the town hall. Uh, so those got installed today in her honor. They'll be up uh for about a week. And they'll be up uh, you know, for this weekend's. Christmas tree lighting, which will be nice. Uh, we also were able to put up. Some uh morning bonnet on uh the Valley Road School where the Historical Society is too in her honor, so. Uh, she will be greatly missed, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's, you know, I. I can't say for sure, but um. I have a feeling that, you know, she lived exactly the life that she wanted to live. That's a nice um. It's a nice way to live. So. Right. Moving on to more practical matters. Um. We have uh some announcements to make, so we have um some. Fun Christmas events coming up. Um, the third annual Stuff the Cruiser event. Uh, is still going on. That's from November twenty. Excuse me, November sixteenth to December fifteenth. Stuff the Cruiser at the Nahat Police Station with donations of a new. And unwrapped gift for kids ages five to thirteen. All proceeds go to the members of the Lynn Boys and and Girls Club. Um. Saw a nice article about um with you, Tony and uh Chief Furlong. Pictured in that, that's a nice um, nice charity effort there. Um, and Hot Firefighters Association Local. Twenty seven eighteen toy drive, bring a new unwrapped. Child's gift to the Nahat Fire Station from now until the week before Christmas. All donations go towards the U S Marine Corps Toys for Tots Program, so. Another nice program by the fire department. Uh, Christmas tree sales at Lowland Parking Lot starts November thirtieth. Last weekend, um, it's Wednesdays and Fri- uh Wednesdays through Fridays. Uh, six P M. to eight P M. And Saturday and Sundays from ten A M. to four P M. Proceeds from the sales help benefit the Nahat Johnson School P T O.
Hey, if I could, if I could just jump in there for a minute. Went down over the weekend and purchased a tree. And I'll tell you what, they had everything you would want. They had the freshest, they had the best, they had the height, the low, they had all sizes. They cut the trees for you right there.
Yeah.
They they deliver free in-town delivery free through your home. It's just, I'll tell you. Not buying a tree there is making a mistake. It's just shit. It's a bitch, the best.
We were down there, uh, uh, I think on first shift, which my daughter was working uh with some help from her boyfriend, so. We stopped up, but they're they're good deals. It's, you know, last year we waited too long and they ran out and we bought one on the Linway and paid like fifty percent more. Or fifty percent less tree, so.
Yeah, exactly.
And and helping the P T O is great too, so. Thanks for mentioning that, Gene. Um. Christmas Fair on Saturday, December seventh, from nine A M. to two P M. At the Nahat Villas Church, so that's this Saturday, yeah. Um. The annual tree lighting at Nahat Town Hall is Saturday. Also December seventh at six P M. Uh, annual Christmas parade fundraiser, Saturday, December fourteenth, starting at six P M. At the Nah- at uh Ty's Restaurant. And then finally, um, annual Christmas parade is Saturday, December twenty first, starting at six P M. From the Nahat Villas Church. For more information on any of these events, visit the community calendar at nahat.org. Uh, the winter parking ban. Uh, goes into effect December thirty first, twenty twenty four to March twentieth, twenty twenty five, from. Twelve A M. Midnight to six. Six A M. No vehicles on the street during this time regardless of. Snow plow ban. Snow parking ban, excuse me, visit the Nahat Police Department if you need a winter parking sticker.
Tony, can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
Um. Why is it necessary? I'm sure there's a reason. To not have parking availability during non-snow days.
Um, we've actually. We've talked about, you know, potentially changing that policy. Um. You know, I think that. It's when when we do have the snow emergency or even just uh, you know, an ice. Scenario where we're uh gonna be spreading salt on the road. It's uh certainly better to not have any vehicles on the road for those and we won't issue a snow emergency or a parking ban. When we're just out salting, uh, obviously, you know. When you, when you spreading salt and sand. Um. You don't want to be. Spreading it into the side of people's cars parked on the side of the road, so. Um, there is an advantage to that. And then when the, when a snow ban, a plow, you know, because we're gonna be plowing. Uh, it makes it a lot easier to deal with, you know, uh. Not having to push a lot of cars off of the street. But we've talked about. Uh, changing that policy and doing what other towns do and just doing a, uh, you know, a blue light. Uh, no parking ban when necessary. Um. So it's something that, you know, we definitely. Can and uh consider. Uh, changing.
Can can we think about it tonight?
Yeah, I mean, it's not on the agenda really to change the policy tonight, but we can discuss it if you want. Um, there's, there's. A little bit of uh investment involved in installing the lights in the system. Um. We've had, I've had Zach reach out. Uh, I actually talked to him about it probably a couple of weeks ago. Uh, reach out to our streetlight company to see what the cost would be to put, you know. Four or five lights around town. So I don't think we've gotten a price on that yet. Um. So you're. Bringing it up at a, at a good time because we were actually just talking about it a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, good. Good.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think. The way we have it, uh, it's, you know, like I said, the advantages of it is when we do have that that parking ban. Uh, you're not dealing with as many cars needing to get them off of the street. Um, because people are used to keeping their cars off the street. And when we don't, you know, when we're out salting, you're not spraying cars parked on the side of the road with salt. Um. But. There's pros to the other side too, where people, you know, only have to move their cars off the road when it's absolutely necessary for plowing. Um, and over the last couple winters, knock on wood, uh, you know, the trend continues. We didn't have a ton of snow. Plowing events. Uh, so it wouldn't have been, you know, too much of a burden uh compared to banning it for the entire winter. So there's pros and cons to both sides, um. So let me get, uh, once we get that price, uh, then we have that, you know, cost factor to weigh. As well.
Yeah, I'm sorry to bring it up unannounced, but it just struck me when I was reading through this. And I said.
Yeah, it's definitely worth thinking about, you know, I I know Tony and I talked about this a couple of weeks ago and um. Yeah, I hadn't really thought about it, but you know. Does seem, you know, well, it seems like snow is becoming less frequent and uh maybe it's time to think of a new policy, so.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah, what's Robbie saying? I I'm sorry?
And she, what's Robbie?
What's Robbie? Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't understand what you said. Uh, you know what? Other communities don't seem to have a problem with it. Uh, and uh, so I I. I think that it's time that we we move forward on this.
Good.
And I've all the things that uh Tony cited are absolutely true, but once again, they they've made that move and and with with success from what I can tell. And obviously, the onus uh is on the owner of the car as far as uh, you know, noticing that blue light as they drive into town uh at night.
Exactly.
It it would be good to um. Get. P P Ws input on. The policy as well. Both. Both sides. Both options there.
Yeah. So uh, why don't I, like I said, I'll I'll, maybe I'll have a price for you by their next meeting and have something. To present for us to consider.
And then um, just to confirm, so um, people need to go to the police. Station to pick up a ticket, I mean, a sticker?
Winter parking sticker? Yeah, winter parking permit, yep.
All right, not town hall or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay. Um, that's all the announcements I have. Um, Gene or. Robbie, you have anything else? Tony?
Yeah, you know. It would uh certainly be in uh the best interest of a lot of the boat owners if people who have their. Dinghies or or dories stored on the asphalt down at the wharf if they were to get them out of there for winter because obviously we do have the flooding issue. Uh, and we still have a few boats that are are uh prams, dinghies, tenders, whatever you want to call them. Scattered around that that need to be moved out. So I'm going to be contacting the owners as best I can. I've already sent out one, one alert. Uh, we'll send out another follow-up, but uh, you know, getting the word out, it'd be good to get them out of there now.
Yeah, good idea. We have a big night tomorrow, I think so.
Uh, just one thing, Josh, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um. I've been. Focused on air quality for the last few meetings. And it's interesting, I went on to Google to see what was out there and because we. We don't have the monitoring system that some of the communities have, and Swampscat just went out and I think they picked up ten units. And there's a a. App out there, it's. Airnow. Dot gov. And it will, if you go into it right now, it will take you. Into a monitoring system that'll show you exactly. Where you stand as we're talking in air quality. And it's done on a color scale. It's really neat. Now, is is it enough to 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 make us confident of the numbers we're going to see? Don't know, but it's a start. It's an opportunity for us all to take a look at it. And maybe. People can, we can post it or whatever it might be, but it's airnow. Dot gov.
Tony, is that the same that website you mentioned to me a couple of weeks back?
Yes, uh, and also, uh. Thanks to our uh. Fire chief. I asked him to do a little more homework on it too, because a lot of our air quality issues were in relation to the fires that were going on in the area. Um. And. He did some homework, sent it over to me. It looks like. You know, we, the sensors, the air quality sensors that we could purchase. That would feed into that website that Gene was just talking about. They run about. I'd say about three hundred dollars apiece, so not too bad.
Yeah.
Um. Of course, you have to set up. You know, a power source and a Wi-Fi connection. Uh, so. Um. I, you know, I gotta look, we didn't, we don't have it necessarily, we didn't have it really necessarily planned in the budget, but for three hundred bucks, we might be able to find. Some funds to uh, you know, purchase one or two, and then it's really, you know. Where would they go and? How could we set them up with power and Wi-Fi? Uh, so, um.
Maybe the fire station.
Yeah.
Or police station.
I'm thinking that new pump station that you're putting up right now has got enough work going on. It might not be a big change order to put in a receptacle up on the roof.
Yeah.
Does that have Wi-Fi?
Does it have Wi-Fi? I know they're transmitting data. I don't know how they do it.
Oh, yeah.
You know, part of the app that you look at shows. A monitoring station halfway down the causeway.
At the halfway house, the D C R one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It shows one there. It's worth checking to see if in fact. It is there, and if it is, is it working?
There used to be one. In the corner of the life-saving station property as well.
Really? It's it's amazing how many there are. Take a look at that map and you'll see them strategically placed all over the place.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good investment. That three hundred dollars would be a good investment.
Yeah, that'd be. That'd be kind of. Hold on. We have one in the school and the kids could uh.
By the way, we're we're in the green right now, which is a good color.
Oh, let me uh. You might, you want me to share my screen real quick? I'll just show you the website he's talking about. So this is uh. This, this, can you, you can see my screen?
Yeah.
So um, you can see the the gauge there. And then if you click on monitors near me. Uh, it shows you a couple of different monitors that are in the area. And then, Gene, I know. I know what you're talking about. That showed me more the other day, but I forget how I got there.
Yeah, this. Doesn't have as many. There's three or four different systems out there. But really, what I'm looking at is. As as you've been working with with Austin on this, the chief on this. Um, certainly, three hundred dollars just to try this would would be a. A good investment.
Yeah.
I think the school uh maintains a weather station on the roof. That might be a great option.
Yeah. Very. Interesting. Yeah, let's. Let's do it.
All right. Well done, Gene.
Yeah.
I haven't done anything.
Well, you're proud of this.
That, that, I I think we added that. A link to that to. The homepage on nahat.org as well. I think, let me just double check. Yeah, it's on the right side. Of the homepage on nahat.org. There's a. Um.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's right here. So, you know, you click on this, it'll bring you to that page I just brought you to.
I think when I was poking around there a couple of weeks ago, you could see it on in map mode, which is kind of a little more informative, I think. Uh.
I see a button there, Tony, monitors near me.
Yeah, that was the one I clicked on and it just brought us to that before, but.
Same thing, okay.
The other day when I was looking through this. And I was looking at. It was, it was related to the, you know, the fires in the area. There were more monitors that popped up that showed all the swampscat ones. It showed the one on the causeway that Gene was show, was talking about. But I don't know how to get there right now, so.
As long as, as long as we get it. In in the process, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to hear we're all involved.
Uh, all right, new business. We have some minutes to approve. Who want to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from October thirtieth, twenty twenty four, November sixth. Twenty twenty four and November twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing insane none, roll call vote.
Gene, Kent, D I.
Rob, Tivoli.
Josh, Andrew Mai. Uh, ongoing business, um, rights of way committee discussion, so um. Uh, on October second um of this year, the Board of Selectmen voted to create a rights of way committee. The mission of the committee would be overseeing the process and progress of activating and publishing town-owned rights of way in the hot. The committee consists of one member from the planning board. Um. That person is um Catherine Casey Carey. One member from the Open Space and Recreation Committee, that person is Paula Devereaux, and one. Member of appointed by the town administrator, and that person is Julie Tarmy. All the members have been appointed, sworn in and have a three-year term. So um, it's. Uh, we should let people know that this committee is um now officially formed and sworn in and uh. Uh, it looks like a great team to me, so. Very excited to have.
And then if you uh. And if you recall, we we got CPC funding um a year or two ago for title research. So. We'll be meeting with the this committee. Uh, I have a list of a number of uh. Public ways in the town in the hot. And what we'll be doing with them to start is to, you know, organize that list. In a, you know, kind of by priority or by um, you know, what's. Uh, or by usage, you know, what, which ones get used the most? And um. They'll work directly with our title researcher to, you know, confirm that the town has property rights uh to those rights of ways. And as we check. Those types of boxes. Um. Will be, you know, then. Uh, further, you know. I guess making sure that the right of way is accessible, it's safe, uh, it's marked, you know. On the property itself. And then the ultimate, you know, goal is to also create, you know, a page on our website that'll advertise where they are. And where, how they're, you know, where they're available.
Yeah. So um, I'm very excited about this, uh. Um, you know, it's it's, I think it's gonna be great to have a committee that, you know, this is their sole focus, you know, the the challenge, I think that, you know, we've had. Historically is um, you know. Spreading the. You know, responsibilities. You know, on you, Tony and or and Dan's grip or on the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board or the Open Space Committee, and it's like. Um, it keeps sort of. You know, fall through the cracks to some degree, so. Um, I'm excited to have a group that's dedicated to this one. This one function, um.
Mr. Chairman, let's let's offer our thanks to Catherine, Paul and Julie for offering uh to volunteer their time. This is gonna be a big project.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. It's not easy, you know, it's it's like, like many of these um. Town. Things, um, you know, when you're on the outside looking in like, like we all used to be before we were reflecting, it's like, well, why can't we just get this done? And um. You know, once you're in there, it's not always as easy as it as it looks and uh, so definitely. Appreciate um. Casey Paul and and Julie stepping up for this, so.
I I talked briefly with Julie too about. An idea of, you know, trying to bring back Preambulation Day. And it won't be. What it was in the past, because a lot of those coastal. Walkways or right-of-way's are no longer there. Um, but, you know, a new modern version of 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 which where. Uh. You know, you give people the opportunity to kind of tour. Uh, different public properties in town and, you know, have different employees from the town or volunteers. Kind of staff those tours and give some history and some lessons and, you know, or or, you know, and. Um, something along those lines, but um, that's something that. We talked about maybe kind of folding into this committee as well.
Yeah. I think, you know, as as Town Council Dan Script keeps reminding us, that doesn't have any uh legal um standing, uh, but. Still a fun thing to do.
Yeah.
So anyway, excited for this uh, this committee to um, try to make some progress there. Uh, with one other thing, oh yeah, you know, I know um Sheila Hamilton has lots of institutional knowledge and um. Mark Conan too, um, Mark said he's willing to um, sit down with these. Tell them what he know, uh, this this committee and tell them what he knows and um, you know, get them, get them rolling, so.
Uh, great.
So great news. Um, that's all we have really on that um rights of way committee. Um, I think, unless somebody has anything else. Um. All right, next on the agenda is the uh Coast Guard housing sales, so. Uh, you want to give us the latest?
Yeah, uh, lot number seven, we closed on lot number seven. Um, and on lot number nine and lot number eleven are scheduled for closing for December thirteenth and December seventeenth. Uh, so with the, with the closing of lot number seven. Uh, and the projected closings of nine and eleven. Uh, we've reached, we've reached out to the legislature to inform them that we uh won't need. Uh, the special legislation extending the loan period. Uh, we feel we're in a good position to be, to pay off that loan, um. In January, when it comes due. Um. And uh, we're working on with our legal team and our listing agent to uh start drafting the details and the schedule of the next R F P. For the remaining lots.
And is the plan still to um, put those remaining lots in the central registry, December fifteenth or thereabouts?
Um. In recent conversations with our listing agent, we're, we may push that back a little bit to uh late December so that they go. Up for sale late January, early February. Uh, the reasons. That. We uh pointed to there is. There's still, you know, with the uh. Presidential election inauguration day isn't until January twentieth. Uh, so that could play a factor in um. You know, people's ability to. You know, people's ability to uh feel comfortable or, you know, to get involved. And also, uh, interest rates are will be adjusted mid to late January as well. Uh, so. Um. Uh, and then lastly, with Christmas and New Years, uh, you know, people are. Somewhat distracted from looking at property sales, so even though you have those extra fifteen days to advertise and get the word of mouth out. You may not have everyone's, you know, attention during that timeframe. So doing, you know, getting it kind of launched. At the beginning of January, so that they're up for sale at the beginning of February, you know, you really have um. You know, a good, that's a good month to really get people's attention on on the availability of them.
Yeah.
Back a couple of weeks.
I've asked you this question before and I I still have. Trouble understanding it. What did the article extend? To us in terms of what we could or couldn't do?
The town meeting article?
Yeah.
Um, well, there's a number of things in there, but specifically on. Related to process, it's. Uh. Alternating lots in two offers over a two-year period.
On all lots.
For all the lots, we have. Two years to sell them. In two separate offers and the offers are of alternating lots. So you take that um, and then you look at procurement law. And what it allows you to do and what the process is there. And then you look at. Typical real estate transaction and trends and and, you know. Trying to, it's not easy. Uh, but trying to. Have the sale process be as familiar to a typical real estate transaction that doesn't have procurement law layered into it. So that buyers are as comfortable as possible.
Okay, that's that's the other question I have. Procurement law, what does it state? You should know this, but I'm I'm just check, check, double checking.
Uh, well, it. For the value of of these properties uh requires that we put it in the central register. And that's a thirty-day notice period. Additionally, there's other notice requirements, like putting it in the newspaper. Um, I think twice. And and then it talks a lot about what uh. You know, how you set up the request for bids and what you can ask for um. And it's somewhat vague, but. What you, it it's then very restrictive about how. You evaluate bids and how it has to meet, you know, what you include in the request for bids. So. The, it's always a challenge, no matter what you're dealing with when you're dealing with procurement, is guessing. You know, what types of in, what information you're gonna receive through bids. And making sure on the front end, you have that information. Uh, included in your request so that you can evaluate based on that information.
I guess the real question is then, as as a house is always up for sale. You were talking about a thirty-day.
No, so you can't, for example, the none of the even-numbered lots. You can't go and say, okay, I want to buy lot number two right now. Because it hasn't been in the central register.
That's where people say, why?
Well, procurement law is all about. Fairness and equity to uh. Public dollars or public property in this case. Um, so. You have to put everyone on notice that this property is available for sale. You have to give everybody the same amount of information about, you know, what's included in the in the sale. How to bid on it. And everybody has an equal opportunity and fair opportunity to bid on that. So you can't. It like, at its core is you, it tries to eliminate. Advantage for one party or another. It's the core like goal of procurement law is to is fairness and equity. To, you know, accessing if you're. If you're purchasing a product or a service, it's fairness and equity to that public dollar. If you're selling something, it's fairness and equity to that thing that you're selling.
But what you could do, Gene, is. Go reach out to the listing agent and say, I am interested in lot number two. Let me know when it. Comes up for bid.
Right, and and so we.
Now.
So we, so procurement law requires thirty-day notice that. The uh bid is coming up, you know, your opportunity to bid on it. It doesn't limit you, though, to do more. That's why we've been publicly advertising that these properties are coming up for sale for the last year and a half. Uh. So, now the best way. When it comes to property, though, the best way to get the information out there is through the MLS. MLS. Uh, only allows you to. List a property as coming soon, like it's not for sale yet, but it's coming soon. Twenty-one days before it's up on the market. So. If we, technically, when we put it in the central register, they're on the market. That's thirty days before the bid. Bid date.
Okay.
So twenty-one days before that. So fifty-one days before the first bid date, they can go on MLS and list and publish as coming soon. Then twenty-one days later, they get changed to for sale. So.
That's the only place I get caught there is on MLS, it's is is. Why wouldn't we? Why shouldn't we just leave everything on MLS throughout the sell period?
Well, we will once they're on the market.
There actually is, there actually is a. It's on MLS right now. I just opened it. Even though there's no, I know, you can't actually buy a lot right now, but um.
And that's where I was.
It is on there.
Yeah.
The, that should be the, the previous lots that were up for sale, right?
There's um, well, what's on there is, there's one for lot five, which. Didn't. Didn't sell. And then there's one that's called generic, it says, you know.
Yes, so Lisa.
One of twelve lots.
Yeah, yeah, so Lisa put, put up a generic listing as well, just to kind of. Inform potential buyers that there are multiple lots available. There may not be on the market yet, but they are, they will be on the market soon.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not, um, you know, flying under the radar now, it's on. It's on the internet, so.
It's an interesting process.
Yeah, it is. Another complex process, but.
Yes.
Them's the rules.
And Tony, if we run out of time as far as the uh uh original town meeting, the saying it had to be done within two years. We go back to town meeting and ask for an extension, is that correct?
We would have to, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, any, any deviation from any of those requirements from the twenty twenty-one town meeting would require. A town meeting vote, so. Sometimes people say, why don't we do this with the lot, or why don't we do, do use one of them for this or one of them for something else? The answer is. It has to be voted on by town meeting, so um. Bring it to town meeting if if um you want to do something different.
Okay, thanks.
So, um, well, that's nice that um, we're able to um retract the request from the legislature um. And uh, if the closeness go well on the thirteenth and seventeenth and uh. Um, we'll have a little breathing room. Be able to pay off that loan and. Yeah. Pressure will be off for it. Um, anything else on the Coast Guard houses, Tony?
Nope, nope.
All right, next up is town administrator report.
Uh, paving update. Uh, Little Nahha has been uh. Is complete. Uh, came out really good, looks great over there. Um, Emerald Road, Fox Hill Road, Ward Road have been milled. I think there's still some milling to do on Castle Road. Uh, the. Schedule was to pave tomorrow and Friday, but I think that's been pushed off to next week. Because of the weather that we're gonna be uh getting and they're still haven't finished the milling yet, so.
Hey, that's a great question. Glad you brought up the milling. What is those piles and where are they going to? End up that are in the lowlands parking lot?
Uh, that's the millings from the road and the contractor will haul them out of town.
Okay, no, the reason I asked is that's the same stuff, is it not, that we put in the, the parking lot and then sand coated it?
Yeah, yep, same, same idea, yep.
Okay, so I didn't know if you had a plan for that to go somewhere else.
No, you know, the. The, most of the milling is good for reuse, but the crack ceiling that that. Gets caught up in the milling is what. Causes, you know, that sticky tackiness problem that we encountered. So. I'd rather not deal with that again, so. Just get, get rid of it.
Thank you.
Um, that's all I have for under the town administrative report on the agenda. Um, we have a lot of other projects going on. Uh, you know, with the pump station, the roof, uh, they're putting the roof on now. It should be done in the next week or two. Uh, the building's coming along really well. Um, if anyone is. Caught in a glimpse of it, uh, you'll see that the exterior is modeled after. The lifesaving station, so you have white exterior with green trim and doors. Um, so it's definitely an upgrade from the old. Flat roof brick square that was there. Um, we have, we're working on uh. Water meters project consistently, constantly working on taking steps there to getting that project going. We're working on um, our required lead service inventory project from the state. Um. We'll be sending letters out related to that, so the state requires us to send letters to. Any uh household that is listed as an unknown. For their, whether there's lead in their water service line, so from the street main to the house. We have a high number of unknowns. Um, not because we don't know the material of the, of the service lines, but because. Uh. Our tie cards that show each service line. And the material and the location and the size uh are from. You know, like the forties and fifties, and they're actually really good. Uh, but the way that they're labeled is it has, you know, for each individual house. It has the last name of the person that was living in that home at that time and the street. Name, but it doesn't have the house number name. So, we're uh, we're, we've been working. In the town hall to cross-reference real estate transaction reports to figure out the house number. Uh, of those, so that we can then input the information that we have. Uh, so it will, when those letters go out, it's definitely gonna cause a lot of um. Calls and communication and questions or concerns um. You know, we don't, there's. We're pretty comfortable with the lack of lead in our water service lines, even though. Currently, they're labeled as unknown. Um, so. We're working, working on that letter, that'll be going out soon and, you know, we'll do. Everything we can to get ahead of it to try to limit, you know, concerns of the residents. And keep people updated as we go through that project. Um, any questions on that?
None.
Okay.
What's the uh Munis software rollout going?
It's going really well, so Munis uh on the accounting side is up and running. Um, we, we're. We're. Whenever you do a software changeover like that, it's a lot of work in. Inputting data from the legacy software program into the new program. So, this month will be the first full month that expense reports. Will be coming from the new software. Uh, but. Those reports are only back to October. And then you have a separate report from the legacy software from October to July. Uh, so. Next year will be our, are really our first full year into, next fiscal year will be our first full year in the system. Um, so Allison, Ed, Kim. Uh, our, you know, everyone that has been involved in the project has been doing. Endless hours of trainings and data entry, it's been. A year or more long project to get to where we are today, so. Uh, really, you know, commend them for all the work that they've done. And then the next part is to uh, get the treasure collector side on board. Uh, so again, it'll be a lot of training and and inputting of data there. So that both treasure collector and accounting are on the same system. Uh, there's also will be trainings with all department heads, so they know how to access the system themselves. Eventually, they'll be able to, you know, have live reporting on their accounts, they could. Uh, put purchase orders through them, submit billing through them, that's. Some time down the road, but that's the eventual goal. And then after that, um. You know, our hope is to incorporate billing on the. Uh. You know, utility side as well. So, yes, town hall's moving into the uh twenty-first century.
Uh, great. Uh, next is citizens forum, so if anybody has a comment or question. Can uh raise your virtual hand uh or unmute yourself and. Say your name and address and make your comment.
Brendan Baronic. To Summer Street.
Good, Brendan.
Um, following up about the winter parking ban discussion, I guess, I I. I I didn't hear mention was could the fire chief be involved in that discussion process? Uh, because I was, I, my concern is the ability for EMS vehicles to navigate through town. I know, I know this past summer, there was definitely times where I could hear the fire truck horns blaring. Um, I think it was to try to let people know to to clear some of the, the width in the roads. And so I just want to make sure, want to sure we at least have a process.
Yeah, you hit him, uh, the fire chief, police chief, DPW superintendent, uh, will all be part of that. Um. You know, Brendan brings up a good point, uh. You know, in those heavy snow months. When you're using the edge of the roadway to store snow. Um. It's, you know, nice to have that space, uh, you know, to keep the road width clear. So, good point, Brendan, uh, we'll talk about that with. With the, with the team.
All right, the uh, uh, other question I had is if they get, I guess if you move forward with the, you know, potential changes. Would you consider a policy about, about what happens if we get another twenty fifteen? Would you consider a policy about, about what happens if we get another twenty fifteen? Where if we're like the first storm, we get dug out and then a week later, we get another storm, so you get an accumulation over the weeks. Cause I can understand, you know, having a park, using a light system to say, okay, tonight, the next few days, you can't park on the street. But if we get in this, in that February and March situation where just continues to accumulate. Of the, at least you have a policy of how to address long-term, you know, several, several weeks where you can't. Um, allow parking.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll consider that too. I mean, keep in mind, the current ban is just from midnight to six AM, so. You know, the, it doesn't really impact during the day. So it wouldn't be too much of a change, but it is a good point and. We'll, we'll, we'll think about that when we talk with the team about it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? See anyone unmuted themselves? Uh, going once.
My name is Scott.
Oh.
Twenty-seven, yeah, twenty-seven Emerald Road. Um, I.
Would, would you mind, um.
Kirkland.
What's that?
Scott Kirkland. Twenty-seven Emerald. Um, I have some questions, um, I'd like, I would like to get on the agenda for the next meeting, if I may. Um, some questions about the clarifications and questions about some of the bylaws. Um, and, uh, I would just like a chance to be able to ask them. If that's possible.
Can you, um, can you, can you expand on that a little bit, like which particular bylaws?
Which particular by what? Well, typically, they would be nine oh one, nine oh two, nine oh three and nine oh four. Um, those sections of the bylaws and they tend to be somewhat confusing. Um, so I figured that I would get on the agenda so that I can ask my questions. Um, I haven't been able to read them completely now, which is why I'm trying to. Uh, formulate my question, I'll formulate my questions between now and then, and then we can discuss it at that point.
Well, Scott, why don't you, why don't you email in your questions to us? And, uh, we'll, we'll look them over with legal, if, if it's a legal interpretation question. Uh, you know, I don't think we'll be able to answer you on the fly at the next meeting. Be good to have your questions in advance.
Um, I'm not a big fan of doing that, but, uh, I will give it a whirl. And to whom would you like it sent? Or, or do you want me, I can handle it to you, Tony?
That's fine, yeah, you can, uh, you can email myself or any member of the select board. Or you can, uh, drop them off at town hall, we can scan them in and. Uh, share them with the board.
Okay, we, we will give that a try then.
All right, thanks Scott, um, okay, anybody else? Don't see anybody unmuted. So, um. The agenda showed an executive session, but, um, we just had an executive session Monday night. So, um, I don't think we're gonna need one of those.
Move to adjutant.
Second.
Okay, real call vote. Joshua Trumay, thank you all.